Seventeen to order, if you please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. And please let the record note that all council members are present this evening except for Mr. Hess. We don't have minutes to approve this evening. We don't have a committee schedule, do we Ms. Raybine?
Kind of. Well, we don't have any committee meetings this week, but next week on the 20th at 6:30 prior to the council meeting, we are having a public safety and health meeting.
Any changes to that schedule? Seeing none, we'll move on to the public comment portion of our agenda. This is your opportunity to comment on items not elsewhere on the agenda. I'd ask that you try to hold your comments to three minutes, please. Yes, sir?
All right. Jesse Ramos, Woodaker Drive, Missoula City Councilman-elect. I just wanted to address a topic that I know that we can all truly unify around, and that's the topic of our veterans. Two days ago, we celebrated Veterans Day. In an effort not to interfere with either the election or Veterans Day itself, I waited until afterwards to present this idea. The major topic at hand is the veteran suicide rate and the overall suicide rate in the state of Montana. I have performed a Department of Health and Human Services study from 2016 showing Missoula County with the highest veteran suicides in the state of Montana. As you know, that's very troubling because the state of Montana has the highest veteran suicide rate in the entire country. So, this is truly a harrowing statistic. I've worked with a wonderful nonprofit organization named RIVER, the Rural Institute of Veterans Education and Research. Their sole objective is to prevent veteran suicides in the state of Montana. We have gotten together many times on how the city can address the epidemic of veteran suicide. For the issue of suicide awareness, I am proposing an idea to the council that if implemented would raise awareness and save lives. I asked around, and I was told that I should present this to the council. RIVER has purchased 53 American flags and 53 crosses, and they would like the flags be draped over the crosses, and the 53 represents the 53 veterans that committed suicide in Montana in 2016. They were wanting to place these at their institute, which was very out of the way, and instead, we wanted to look at another form, and we wanted to have permission from the city to have a temporary memorial displaying these flags outside of City Hall on the sidewalk from Thanksgiving to Christmas. And the reason we chose those dates is because the holidays are a very hard time of year for veterans, and that's unfortunately when a lot of them complete. There's no Christmas in Iraq, there's no Christmas in Vietnam, and when they get back here, a lot of times they don't have loved ones to share the holidays with. So, by displaying these flags, we will accomplish many goals. We will show our veterans that we have the deepest respect for them and their sacrifice. We will show Montana we are taking charge of our county's problem with veteran suicides. We will show our community we are ready and willing to do whatever it takes to lower our suicide. Maybe these flags will remind folks to reach out to their friends that are struggling. Maybe one of those phone calls or texts was all that was needed to stop somebody from going over the edge. Maybe it will remind folks that the city does have a suicide prevention specialist and multiple nonprofits that they can reach out to. This will knock off Missoula taxpayers a dime, as RIVER will be providing all the materials and will bring enormous awareness, not only to the plight of our veterans, but to Montana's suicide problem overall. Right now, Montana leads the nation in veteran suicide. Missoula County is leading the state. When I am on the council, I hope the council will lead the way in not only solving the problem of veteran suicide, but suicide as a whole. After tonight, RIVER and I will be reaching out to other municipalities across the state to see if they will join us in our battle against suicide. Again, the only cost to the city will be that of recognition. Is that something that the Missoula council can do? I will be staying after the meeting with RIVER Director Ed Lasowski to discuss the path forward with no cost to the taxpayers. Please ask yourself, what do we have to lose? If we could save just one life by displaying these flags, wouldn't it be worth it? Thank you for your time.
Any other general public comment this evening? Yes, sir.
Greetings, Missoula City Council. My name is Anthony J. Cox. I'll make this brief as I have 182nd term limit to publicly speak. Downtown parking on the fancy meters is another term limit. 50 cents gets you 1,800 seconds. This time of year, I really noticed that daylight obeys yet another quintessential term limit, sunrise to sunset. Term limits aren't only natural, they're healthy because they promote balance and equality. I believe that the seats of this council, including the mayor and city attorney positions, should also abide by fundamentally sound term limits. I feel that this would be a huge step forward in the evolution of our city government. It would promote fresh ideas from many more voices in far less time. I'm curious to know how you members of the council feel about establishing reasonable term limits. If you think it's a good idea, let's work together. Let's put it to a vote. Local government shouldn't be about a majestic career. You got rid of that majesty stuff in 1776. Pass the torch. Thank you, and I'd love to hear your feedback.
Thank you, Mr. Cox. Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor, my name is Ed Lasowski, as I've spoke to the council before. I apologize that if any of you feel like we're trying to pull anything with these flags. We're not. Our veterans in this country have done a lot for us. We need to do something to help these guys during the holidays. Typically, in my work as a suicidologist within Missoula and even the state, this is the highest time that we're going to be seeing all the veterans doing the completions. We also see a lot of interventions, the police, they're doing great jobs, the fire department, a lot of people. But we need to get awareness. We spent the money. We'd like to fly these flags. We'd like to remind people to reach out. That's all these flags are. They're not political in nature at all. I've been in Missoula, serving the veterans of Missoula. I've had to work with two-year-olds that seen their dad complete suicide in front of them. I've had, and I would call it an honor, to serve almost 200 families in this state that have had a loved one complete suicide. This is the hardest time of the year. This and the day that they had something occur to them while they were in service. This is something that we can do to raise awareness. All I'm asking for is raising awareness. And it's simple, and if we can just remind people during this period that it's serious, deadly serious, reach out to your veteran buddies, neighbors. Make sure they're doing okay. Many of these veterans have a lot of issues that causes them to be socially isolated. Yet, while you're enjoying your family, they're getting deeper and deeper into depression. So, I'm asking a favor of this council, and I'm asking you, Mr. Mayor, I should have came to your office. I didn't have time, and I didn't want to affect or look like we were trying to go after the elections in any way or go after anybody in any way. I just need people to be aware that this is a very, very deadly time for these veterans. Almost a third, if not more, of all the suicides occur during this period. And the statistics that we see from the Montana Department of Health, I'm trained by the American Association of Suicidology to do psychological autopsies. The statistics do not reflect the reality. We cannot tell you how many veterans are completing suicide. The reason for that is if a guy gets suicidal, drinks a bottle of booze, and hits a bridge abutment, is that suicide or is that not? I work on these cases on a constant basis. Another statistic that we don't know, how many family members are the victim of suicide because of untreated veterans? We know these statistics. We know the VA is doing something because the veterans that are in the VA getting help, the suicide rate is going down. But there are 30,000 veterans and almost, and again, statistics only tell part of the story, and I know my time is precious, but 7,000 to 8,000 veterans in western Montana that are not enrolled, that is 60% plus of all veterans that are going to complete suicide are not enrolled for healthcare. This is just a memorial for those that completed last year and showing the veterans that we do care. So, I'm asking the council for permission for this, and I was told this is the only way to get the full council. Thank you for your time, Mr. Raybine, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you, sir. Any other general public comment this evening? All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to our consent agenda. Items on that agenda were approved unanimously in council standing committees, and we save a little time on Monday evenings by considering these items all at once. Ms. Raybine will read the list of consent agenda items loud. Folks in the audience and those at home will know what we're considering, and we'll ask for comment before we vote. Ms. Raybine?
Thanks. Tonight's consent agenda has nine items, and the first, as always, are the city's accounts payable, which we refer to as claims. That item is to approve claims in the amount of $1,141,336.65 per checks that are dated tomorrow, November 14, 2017. Number two is to approve the recommended reduction in impact fees for the failure sport-specific training facility located at 7296 Interstate Place. Number three is to adopt a resolution relating to the development of the Fox site, approving the project in the form of certain collateral agreements in connection therewith, and authorizing the execution and delivery of the collateral agreements associated with that project. Number four is to adopt a resolution of intention to annex and incorporate within the boundaries of the city of Missoula three tracts of land that are located west of Grove Street and south of the Clark Fork River, further described with a meets-and-bounds description in petition number 9862. That's an annexation petition that's on file in my office. Zone the north portion of the parcel, as described in the resolution in Exhibit A, as RT 5.4, which is a residential zone, and the south portion of the parcel, which is in Exhibit B on the resolution, OP 1, which is an open space district in the city, subject to two conditions of approval, and setting a public hearing on that entire matter on December 4, 2017. Number five is to adopt a resolution declaring certain city of Missoula property is surplus and authorizing, I can't say S's, authorizing its disposal under sale. Those are primarily vehicles. Number six is to approve a consultant agreement with Territorial Land Works Incorporated of Missoula for engineering-related services for the Farvus Pressure-Reducing Valve Project, a PRV, pressure-reducing valve, as a component of the 2018 Water Utility Improvements Projects in an amount not to exceed $30,535. Number seven is to approve consultant agreement with Territorial Land Works Incorporated for engineering-related services for the railroad street water main replacement project as a component of the 2018 Water Utility Improvements Projects in an amount not to, it says in an amount to exceed, I'm pretty sure it says in an amount not to exceed, we're missing a not on the agenda, $55,342. Number eight is to approve a consultant agreement with Morrison &amp; Merrily Incorporated of Missoula for engineering-related services for the Grant Street Harve Avenue Water Main Replacement Project as a component of the 2018 Water Utility Improvements Projects in an amount not to exceed $88,900. And finally, number nine, it's another water project, and that is to approve a consultant agreement with Morrison &amp; Merrily Incorporated of Missoula for engineering-related services for the Lincoln Hills Storage Tank Preliminary Design Project, also a component of the 2018 Water Utility Improvements Projects in an amount not to exceed $32,800.
Thank you, Ms. Raybine. Questions or comments from council members on the consent agenda? Ms. Jones?
So, I wanted to take a few minutes and talk about Agenda Item Number Three. We spoke about this in committee, but this is a big deal for the city of Missoula, and I wanted to go through it one more time so that there's more awareness and more understanding of this issue. I sat on the working group for the last two years, along with Brian Von Losberg, and John DeBary sat in on a lot of the meetings also, sat in on the working group for this project, and I wanted to explain from the viewpoint of city council what this agreement will do for the city. So, this is a seven-acre parcel with several phases of planned development. The first phase, which is where the current parking lot, the sunken parking lot is that people see, will be a hotel, convention center, underground parking, and some condominiums on the upper floors of the hotel. I think part of Phase One or else leading into Phase Two, closer to the corner of Orange and Broadway, there will be parking garage, offices, retail, and then as it heads west, there's going to be more offices and then leading into residential living spaces. So, this is a big, big development, and we have had a vacant lot there that we then turned into a parking lot for decades with extremely minimal income and very minimal tax base. So, we have two issues. First of all, the city owns the land that the parking lot currently sits on, so this is an asset for the city, and the city should be compensated in some form for that land. But then also we have future MRA tax increment funding that will come from this project as it is built up and it is more valuable. And so, we're going to do two things that are contemplated in this agreement. First of all, where the parking lot is located, as that is built up and the big convention center is built of 15,000 square feet, the convention center will be turned into a condominium and purchased by the city using the TIF funds. Okay, so the convention center and some surrounding space around it will ultimately belong to the city. Secondly, over towards the Chicken Block, as it is called, the more the corner of Broadway and Orange, a second parking garage will be built there, okay, and the income from the leasing and selling the spaces and leasing them to public parking and to other surrounding businesses, the income from that will go into basically bonds that will pay for the construction of the parking lot, of the parking garage, and then ultimately that will be purchased back by the city through these bonds also. So, the city will own the condominium convention center. The city will own the parking garage on the Chicken Block, and that's going to be our long-term investment through TIF funds. Secondly, we have this property that the city currently owns that will lie underneath the convention center and hotel. It's currently valued at $2.3 million. So, first of all, if we own, I'm just approximating here, but if we own 17% to 20% of that building via the condominiumized convention center, then we get a credit for that portion of, that percentage of the land underneath it that we own, because condominiums own a percentage of the land that they're underneath. Secondly, where the Chicken Block is located, that land will be credited, the land will ultimately go to the city, and however much that land is worth will be a credit against the value, the $2.3 million of the land, which is where the current parking lot is. So, it's a lot to put into four minutes here, but I think I got it mostly right. It's more complicated than that. There's numerous levels here. This has been hours and hours and hours of many people working on this, but in general, from the point of view of city council, we can either look at a parking lot for the next few decades, or we can do something where we're going to be compensated for the land that we own, and we're also going to be investing in the future in creating a huge economic engine and an anchor on that side of downtown. The size of this convention center is so big, the hotel attached to it will only cover a portion of people who come for conventions, so it will benefit all of downtown in many, many ways. So, I am sure that my colleagues have more to add for the gaps that I've missed, but I wanted to at least paint with some broad strokes what this agreement means, what the future hopefully looks like if we can get this through and make it all happen.
Mr. Von Losberg?
Thanks. Thanks, Gwen, for going through that. I'd measure the time spent in years instead of hours. I just want to underscore maybe a few of the points that you made because they're the ones that I think are of interest to the public primarily. You mentioned the annual economic impact of this, the estimate that this is about a $16 to $17 million annual economic impact to the good for the community. As you said, we really have a choice of whether there's a conference center done that competes there against other existing facilities. If we didn't have this partnership, this partnership allows us to locate something transformational in downtown that doesn't just compete, it provides a new level that benefits everybody, as you mentioned, other hotels and businesses in the area. And primarily, I wanted to really underscore those points about the value. What's the city getting? This is not a giveaway to private developers. The land was assessed at $2.3 million. The agreement, among several things that is on the consent agenda tonight, sees that the city gets the $2.3 million payment over a financing structure that spans 15 years and makes sense for both the cities for the developers. And lastly, I think a really key point in this, and frankly, it was part of the reason that it took so long in the negotiations, conference centers often come in cities with a risk or a subsidy requirement. We do not have that here. When we enter into a contract with the operator, the hotel operator will assume risk for maintenance and upgrades and upkeep at the facility, and that's a really key point. One of the things we really worked on was how do we minimize or eliminate ideally any risk or requirement from the general fund, and so there is zero input from the general fund needed on an annual basis, and that's a really good thing for the city. And I think that covers it. Thanks.
Further comments, questions? Anyone in the audience here to comment? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
On the consent agenda, Armstrong. Armstrong votes yes. Becerra?
Yes.
Becerra votes yes. Bentley?
Bentley votes yes.
Kares?
Kares.
Kares votes yes. DeBary?
DeBary.
DeBary votes yes. Hedall?
Hedall.
Hedall votes yes. Hess? Hess is absent. Sorry about that. Jones?
Jones.
Jones votes yes. Marler?
Marler.
Marler votes yes. Von Losberg?
Von Losberg.
Von Losberg votes yes. West?
West.
West votes yes. And Wilkins?
Wilkins.
Wilkins votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? That is 11 ayes and one absent.
And the consent agenda is approved. We will move on to comments from city staff agencies, boards, commissions, authorities, and the community forum. We do have a neighborhood council report this evening from the University District, Mr. Drakos. Or we don't. We must have had a little misunderstanding. We'll move on then. Ladies and gentlemen, to special presentations, we have one in the form of proclamation this evening. Whereas studies show that many Missoulians have a significant struggle with emotional disturbances, disturbances such as depression and anxiety, and whereas there is an economic burden associated with depression and anxiety for the cost of treatment, absenteeism and presenteeism, which is showing up for work and not performing well due to illness, and whereas Montana has been near or at the top in the nation for the rate of suicide for nearly 40 years, and whereas research in the last five years has indicated that increasing resilience is a good way to reduce healthcare costs, increase vitality and productivity, and creates a starting place for awareness and education, now therefore I, John Engingham, Mayor of the City of Missoula and the State of Montana hereby recognize the week of November 13th through 19th, 2017 as Community Resilience Week. We will move on, ladies and gentlemen, to the public hearing portion of our agenda. State law and our own council rules set guidelines for considering a variety of topics in a formal way. Following a staff report on each of these, the council and I will invite comment from folks in the audience. Council typically votes on the same evening as a public hearing unless one council member elects to return that item to committee for further consideration. And we will begin this evening with a public hearing on Hellgate Gardens annexational and a conditional use request for a townhome exemption development in the Hellgate Elementary Area. And Ms. Baker has our staff report this evening.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jenny Baker. I'm with Development Services, and this evening I am presenting a request for a townhome exemption development project called Hellgate Gardens. This project involves an annexation request, a request for zoning upon annexation of RT 5.4 residential, and because the proposal has 10 or more units, it is also a conditional use request. There are two motions for council's vote. The first is for the annexation and zoning upon annexation. This motion must be approved in order for council to vote on the conditional use. That is the second motion. If the annexation and zoning upon annexation are not approved, then the property reverts back to county land with county zoning. This project is represented this evening by Paul Forsting of Territorial Land Works. The applicant is Adam Hertz, and he is acting on behalf of the property owners Bruce and Mary Siren. Here's the location of the property in the blue square with the blue star. It is on the south side of Siren Road across from the Hellgate Elementary School. It's just west of Flynn Lane and north of Mullen. When you're looking at this slide, the areas highlighted in red are within existing city limits, and the areas that are just regular aerial photos are county land. The subject property is contiguous to city limits on the north. Here again is another photo of the property. It's 283,171 square feet or a little over 6.5 acres. Property is currently vacant, and there is no address assigned to it. The applicable regional plan is the Our Missoula City Growth Policy, which recommends a land use designation for this area of residential medium with 3 to 11 dwelling units per acre. The requested RT 5.4 zoning would allow for development of up to eight units per acre in the middle of this range. As others have pointed out, Siren's Road is inaccurate. It is Siren Road. This is the way it shows up in GIS, so I apologize for that error. The existing zoning for the property is C-RR1, which is County Rural Residential 1. That's one dwelling unit per acre. Most of the unbuilt county land in the area is zoned C-RR1. The city land in the area is zoned for higher density with some variation in zoning applied to nearby parcels. Some of the subdivisions, such as Hellgate, Flynn Ranch, and 44 Ranch, are zoned as special districts or planned unit districts. Other city parcels in the area are zoned RT 10, which permits four dwelling units per acre. The requested zoning for this parcel is RT 5.4, which is residential and permits one dwelling unit per 5,400 square feet, or again, about eight units per acre. This also allows duplex building types. As you'll see shortly, the townhome exemption proposes 36 units, so the actual built density of the project would be about 5.54 units per acre. In addition to looking at the zoning of the adjacent subdivisions, we also In addition to looking at the zoning of the adjacent subdivisions, we also looked at the density, as you saw in the memo that was issued on this topic and is posted on the city's sire website. The zoning varies, and the as-built density and lot sizes are within a similar range to what is proposed for Hellgate Gardens. What you're looking at at the top is Pleasant View, where the average lot size is about 6,000 square feet, and that's four dwelling units per acre. Hellgate, down at the bottom, has lot areas between 3,000 and 6,000 square feet, which comes out to 10 dwelling units per acre. 44 Ranch has lots between 4,400 and 8,500 square feet, which is about 4.13 dwelling units per acre. And finally, Flynn Ranch has units that are between 3,900 and 10,000 square feet, so that's about 4.86 units. Hellgate Gardens proposes lot areas for each dwelling between 3,200 and 5,000 square feet. This is within the range recommended by the growth policy and comparable to the lot sizes of adjacent subdivisions. Criteria to consider for zoning upon annexation, according to Title 20, Section 2085040I, states that as long as the zoning meets any of the following criteria, it can be considered. In this instance, the third criteria, which is that the proposal be consistent with the land use and zoning recommendations for the subject areas as set forth in the growth policy, is the most applicable one for this request. This section relates to the conditional use request, and we will come back to the motion for zoning and annexation. But now we'll look at the site development plan, where you can see that there are three internal roads on the project, and they are within public access easements. There's also an alley in the middle, which is private and provides parking for all of the dwelling units. Siren Road, which is to the north of the property, will be a 35-foot wide road with parking on both sides. Currently, it has parking on one side and is 24 feet of paving. A condition of approval requires that Siren Road, the portion of Siren Road that is in the easement, will be dedicated as city right-of-way. There is also, as you can see, boulevard and sidewalk, which will be installed on all sides of the development, and in the center, there's a park and garden area that has a little more than the requirement of 11% of the site. These are some building renderings. These are the single dwelling units, and these renderings are for the duplex units. This project was considered and reviewed in light of specific townhome exemption development standards. It was reviewed to make sure it complies with all of the standards specific to townhome exemption developments. I'm going to address the review criteria that apply to this project, and there are others which we won't talk about, such as slope or riparian area, which didn't apply. They weren't relevant in this instance. But the criteria that do apply include density. Given the parcel size, the requested zoning would allow the applicant to build up to 52 units. However, as we discussed, they're instead proposing 36 units or 5.4 dwelling units per acre. That is within the 3 to 11 dwelling unit range recommended by the growth policy, and thus it meets the standard for density that's part of the review criteria. Setbacks in townhome exemption developments have to meet the standards of the underlying zoning district, and in this instance, that would be 20 feet for the front and rear, 7.5 feet, or one-third the height, whichever is greater, for the side interior, and 10 feet on street-side yards. Each of the units in the development meets the setback requirement. Infrastructure in this development must meet Title 12 standards. Engineering reviewed the project according to those regulations and finds that it meets the standards for access, roads, sidewalks, and the alley. Conditions of approval 6 through 12 in the staff report also seek to ensure that the project as-built meets Title 12 standards. For the length of the block, there cannot be blocks longer than 480 feet without a pedestrian access brake. As you saw on the site plan, I hope, there is a five-foot wide sidewalk that bisects the townhome development sort of in the middle, such that the block is split into two segments of 220 feet apiece. Finally, for open space, 11% is required to meet the standard, and this project is proposing just a little bit more than 11% of the area for park and garden for residence There are conditions of approval. Title 20 states that in addition to meeting the requirements of the zoning ordinance, the development must also comply with any other applicable regulations, be they city, state, or federal. So many of the conditions of approval that we will look at briefly here are included in the staff report and related to ensuring the project meets with those additional regulations. The first condition of approval says that if the annexation and zoning upon annexation is not approved by a two-thirds vote, the conditional use does not go forward. We'll talk a little bit more about why it's a two-thirds vote in a couple of slides. The second condition is the standard one, which says that according to Title 20 regulations, the plans submitted for building permits must substantially conform with what is approved here this evening, if it is approved. The third and fourth conditions deal with an abigation easement because this property is in the airport influence area. The development covenants must include advising potential buyers of noise and potential safety This is the airport influence area. It's the hatched part of this slide, and where the big red star is, is where this property is, so it's just on the edge of the area. Condition number five is based on input from the county health department, which states that the development covenants must also address radon and air quality, as it would be affected by the use of wood stoves. Conditions 6 through 8 allow engineering, city engineering, to review plans for the road improvements prior to building permit approval. And condition nine also allows engineering to review plans to ensure that parking is allowed on only one side of the private roads within the development, and that that will include the proper painted curbs and signage. The 10th condition says that private roads will be maintained by the homeowners. 11 and 12 allow city parks to review and approve landscaping and maintenance plans for the boulevards and the park area. And finally, the 13th condition is a revegetation and weed management plan that will be done in accordance with state law. We also considered this proposal to assess whether it meets the conditional use review criteria, and those are that it be compliant with zoning standards and other applicable regulations. As we've just discussed, we have ascertained that it does meet all of those regulations. The second is that the residential nature of the project is similar and compatible with the development that has occurred around it. The site plan and the building design are also comparable to other residential development in the area. The third is compatible operating characteristics. The residential nature of the project has similar characteristics to other development in the area and can benefit from the near proximity to the school. And finally, as far as traffic safety, the engineering department has recognized there will be an increase in traffic as a result of this project, and they believe that the surrounding infrastructure is adequate to handle the anticipated increase. That brings us to the first motion before you, and that is on the annexation and zoning upon annexation. The recommendation is to adopt a resolution to annex and incorporate within the boundaries of the City of Missoula a certain parcel of land described as tract 1B2 of COS 4204, and zone the property RT 5.4 residential in the city, subject to the one condition of There is a provision for a formal protest to be registered, and we have received sufficient input from adjacent properties that there is a formal protest. That requires two-thirds of you present and voting tonight to approve this in order for it to move forward to the conditional use. You can see the adjacent properties. We received input from all five adjacent property owners. Only 25% were required for there to be a formal protest. The one and two are under the same ownership, so with those and property number five, there was enough for the 25% threshold, which means two-thirds approval is required. This is the second motion, which we will consider. If you approve the first, this is for the conditional use, and the recommended motion is approval of the townhome exemption development in accordance with city zoning and based on the findings effect in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval. That is my presentation. If you have questions, I will be glad to answer them. Paul Forsting is here, and a number of the adjacent property owners are as well.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. On behalf of the developer?
Yeah. Hello, council members. Paul Forsting, Territorial Land Works. I'm here on behalf of the developer. Adam Hertz would also like to be here, but he had to go to the special session for the legislators, so he's inhaling it right now, but he did provide his comments as part of the public record, and he added some, I guess, transparency with the cost implications of doing a project like this. And so I can do my best to try to explain some of those questions, some of the comments that he provided in that email, if you have any questions about that. It's something that we, from my position, working at a civil engineering firm as a planner, I certainly know our costs, and developers and such will talk with us about their costs, but we don't always get the land cost and other things wrapped into a nice bundle. And so it is interesting to have that information, and it is, I think, important to note, Adam came to our office in the early part of 2017, just at the beginning of the year, and was looking to do housing. He recognized the need in our community for single-family housing and places for families and, you know, people to buy land and have a house. He also recognized that there's, you know, as a realer, he has a unique perspective, and as a former city council member, he has a pretty good idea for the lack of availability of those houses. He identified this property, this parcel of land, for its obvious location right next to the school. It sits right across the street from Siren Road, across from Hellgate Elementary. And that school currently has, I think, 1,450 students there, and their projections, if they're accurate, and Missoula is to grow by 200 students in the next, well, maybe five or six years, I think they said, by 2023. That's quite a few students that are going to go there, and it's already a pretty large school. Well, we can't think of a better spot for those kids to live than across the street in this development. And we're asking for RT 5.4 as a zoning. That's the zoning that matches the site plan that we prepared. We prepared the site plan with the goal of providing complete infrastructure there. We put in three roads and an alley. That provides, not only does that provide a unified location for everybody to access their parcels, but also it's going to provide what we hope is ample parking on the streets. All the streets will have parking on one side, including Siren Road. The city engineering department asked us to, well, Adam volunteered and thought it was important to increase the size of Siren Road, specifically to have parking there, but we're also going to build boulevard sidewalk and increase the trail there. But the engineer department also wanted us to increase that width, and so we're going to be adding approximately 15.5 feet of pavement that will help with that infrastructure there. So we looked at infrastructure. We also looked at the park. This is a townhouse exemption development, the first of its type, that I'm aware of, and I think that's accurate. And with townhouse exemption developments, you have, I guess, a hard, fast rule that you have to have 11% of it for park, period, regardless of what type of zoning district we have here. We have to, 11% of this 6.52 acres has to go to park. And so with the infrastructure, with the park right in the middle, we looked and devised how we could create a layout that would work for the property. The goal of Adam's was the whole time is to try to preserve as much room as we can for these house sites. And every phase, when we devised a layout, it keeps getting tighter and tighter, and really what we're talking about is people's home sizes and their yards, and we've been very conscious of that. And we, Adam would much prefer more units here, but at the same time, he wanted to provide something that's livable. RT 5.4 is very similar to the zoning of our 5.4, which we find in some of our great neighborhoods here in Missoula. The Lewis and Clark neighborhood has that zoning, the Rattlesnake has that zoning, and the university has that zoning. We think that's not too dense for this area. We have a wonderful school here, and we think this is very appropriate for this neighborhood. You know, Missoula doesn't have a lot of room to grow, as you guys all know. In particular, we look west of Missoula for that next kind of growth area. Your growth balls, he acknowledges, this area will be a receiving area for development and growth. I like to think of it as, you know, we have East Missoula, and hopefully, one day, people will be very fond of West Missoula. I know the people who live out there now enjoy it. And as it grows, and as maybe some more community-related facilities come in there, maybe an anchored grocery store, maybe, you know, some other things that'd be interesting, folks will look upon it as its own unique neighborhood, as the Lewis and Clark area is, as the Rattlesnake is, as the university is. And so I just wanted to add that here today for you. We spent quite a bit of time on the project, but it did move relatively fast, and I appreciate that, and I know Adam does, too. The city agencies and the planning department in particular did a great job of meeting with us up front to tell us what we needed to do to create a layout that was going to meet the regulations, and it had a lot of the items that they're looking for in a development. We had the opportunity for those meetings, and we had a chance to address comments from the Parks Department and make modifications per those. We had a chance to meet with the engineering department and make adjustments for them, and we also had the opportunity to meet with the fire department, and again, the planning department's been great. With that, I'd say I'd really like to be able to address any comments that you'd like me to. I can add more on any aspect of the project that you'd like. But again, I appreciate your time, and I appreciate your decision tonight on this project. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And with that, I will open the public hearing. Please come to the microphone if you'd like to comment on the annexation or the zoning, and if you would, I suspect a number of folks would like to talk this evening, so if you try to keep your comments around three minutes, I'd be grateful.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Jacobson, and I'm here representing my parents, Peter and Adeline Jacobson. They own the eight acres that borders the entire southern boundary of this proposed subdivision, and they have some concerns about the density of it. With the RT 5.4 zoning, the lot sizes on this project are going to average about 4,700 square feet. That means that these 36 dwellings are sited on just 3.5 acres. The rest of it is roads, boulevards, sidewalks, open space, everything else that goes along with it. When you figure the dwelling density there with the 35 or 36 on the 3.5, that gives you a dwelling density of 10 dwellings per acre where they actually sit. And of course, this is on the high side of what the city's growth policy is for the area. We feel that this property should be zoned RT 10. That would match the RT 10 zoning that's on the other property on Siren Road that was recently annexed into the city, along with the nearby Pleasant View subdivision. Now, even at this zoning, the developers would be able to build roughly four houses an acre or a total of about 24. And of course, this density is still much higher than any of the adjacent properties. Now, of course, the question here is, is this development comparable to other adjacent properties? Now, if one is referring to the properties in the county, it obviously is not. But even if you compare its higher-density zoning to the nearby properties there in the city, it doesn't compare exactly to those either. There's been a comment made that this property has to be developed to the maximum possible dwelling density to make it profitable for the developer. We find that this comment to just be astonishing. We find that this comment to just be astonishing. This property will be developed, and we would just like to see it developed to a slightly less density to fit in and match better with the existing neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson.
My name is Maureen Edwards, and I live on the Flynn Ranch that borders the western part of the proposed development. And I wondered if I could ask Jenny to come up and help me, because I'd like to refer to her thing. Do you mind?
Which one would you like?
Okay, the very beginning, just the overview.
Yes, please.
I'll need that one later, but not now. There we go. That's good enough. Okay, if you will look up to the thing right there, what I want to show, first of all, is zoning is important to the neighborhood, right? And I want to show you what our zoning, our mental zone, is of our neighborhood. It starts a little bit too far to the west here, but it starts over by 44 Ranch, okay? And it, which is single-family housing, kid-friendly, moves over to the Flynn Ranch subdivision, single-family housing, kid-friendly, goes to our, across our park, goes across the school park, goes all over to Pleasantville, come down here, single-family housing, very kid-friendly, comes down to Mullen Road, has the area here, let's see, where are we at? Has Flynn Lane, which is individual, single-family housing, comes over to Tipperary, which is single-family housing, kid-friendly, comes over to undeveloped property and back up to 44 Ranch. Now, if you look at this, when we look at this, what we see is a property, number one, that's neighborhood-based, but it's cohesive, but has one element, and that is our surrounding dependence on the school. What we want are long-term, single-family housing that's kid-friendly, and that's what we'd like to see here. Now, I need to get Jenny. I'm sorry, can you show me the zoning that the city has? Okay, right there's fine. All right. If you look at the zoning, now, when zoning first came in in the county, we had people that worked on the zoning, and I was one of them. And when the city comes in, every time a new development comes in, what you find out is that there's a different zoning there. Zoning is supposed to be broader-based than this. Zoning should reflect the needs and the uses of the people in the area. This zoning is a response, is a reaction to zoning, actually. It is a result of negotiation between the city and between the developers. The only place that the neighbors, the people who are part of the zoning, have any kind of say is to come here and be negative protesters. Now, how fair is that? We're not anti-development, and I want you to know that. We're not anti-people coming into the neighborhood. We're not anti-city. We're not anti-Mister Hertz or the plan. We think, nice guy, the plan itself is fine, but we don't think that it fits into this particular area. Now, Jenny, if I could have the one that shows the zoning, there, this one. Okay, if you look at this area, okay, the zoning that they're proposing does not actually fit into the area, as Mr. Hertz said. The only piece that fits into that area is one down in Hellgate Meadows. Do you see that? This is not our zone. This zone, if you look, is a central park, surrounded by businesses. Then you've got apartment complexes going out in all different spokes, directions, and then you have got cluster housing there. The needs in this area are completely different from the needs in our area. The needs in that area, that's like an urban interface area. Their single biggest need is access. They want access to the neighborhood or to the businesses. They want access to their work. They want access to entertainment. This kind of a design for homes is actually a little bit more transitory, not bad, but it is more transitory than what we want in our neighborhood, which is single-family dwellings for long-term family use. When people live in this area, what they want is something that fits their needs at the time, whether it's the job or whether it's conditions or whatever. But as soon as they grow out of that condition, as soon as their family grows, for example, or they have a different job, they move out of that area. And that's not what we want here. We really, really want, we want to look forward to long-term family housing in this area.
And we're pushing five minutes.
What?
Yep.
Already? Okay. I'm going to, I'll do my conclusion.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. We'd like our neighborhood zone to reflect the priorities that we have, which is long-term family housing, kid-friendly areas. We don't care if it's city or county, but we don't see that city coming into an area should change the zoning that was already developed by the neighborhood. If there's going to be a change in the zoning, it should be done by the neighbors in that area. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
My name is Molly McKinnon. I'm an owner, and I promise I'll stay under five minutes. I'm an owner of the property of the old Flynn Ranch, which is just to the west of this proposed housing developments, and I have two major concerns. First is traffic. Earlier, I challenged some of you to go out to Hellgate Elementary School at 8:00 in the morning and to experience the parents, 200, 300 parents dropping their kids off on this Siren Road, which is, I don't know if you can visualize it given this, Siren Road is a quarter of a mile long. And so if you can imagine, 200 to 300 cars there, plus you add the 32 to 72, the 36 to 72 new cars from the development, I don't know how you can see this as anything other than avoidable congestion. Now, I know that this was, this issue was addressed by Kevin Slavarp. I'm not sure what his title is, but having to do with the city, one of the city planners, and he stated, for example, I quote, "With the addition of 36 dwelling units, this TE development will generate additional traffic. However, this will not result in significant adverse impacts to the capacity or safety of this road." I'm not sure which road he's talking about, Siren or Flynn Lane or Mullen Road, in any case. "The city is actively working on completing the grid road resolutions adopted by the county commissioners. Once these roadways are constructed, there will be additional capacity to serve the citizens living in this development and others using the roads to travel," end quote. So if you look at the city-county or the resolution adopted by the county commissioners about the grid road resolution, this extends George Elmer from Mullen Road to the highway, West Broadway, as it does Mary Jane Boulevard, and includes England Boulevard, but none of these touch this development. This development is still limited to a single entry that can only go out on Siren Road, a quarter of a mile long, and then down Flynn Lane. So this new grid doesn't, does not really resolve the congested problem that's presented by this particular development. The only potential additional exit, if you look on the city kind of plan, is, appears as a road that is, in fact, doesn't exist. And I'm going to try, if I can go back, or if you can, actually, I don't know how to go back. You can go through the overall plan. There's, right here, this is good. Where that part that says Siren Road, Siren Road is, begins at the roundabout and goes to Flynn Lane. Where it is labeled is not Siren Road. That is a private easement that is covered by a property, which on your map, it had listed as property, or two plots, property one and property two. That's actually one piece of property, and it's covered by conservation easement, and this easement specifically precludes any public road through there. So when I look at the letter of Mr. Slavarp, I don't understand how the city kind of grid can answer the congestion problems raised by this. Okay, my second concern has to do with changing current zoning laws. It seems that rather than expect the community to prove why the zoning should be respected, it would be up to, it should be up to the developer to show why change would benefit the community. To that end, Mr. Hertz has written a letter in which he gives, as I understand it, two basic reasons for zone changes. His first one has to do with profit margins. We all know that profit margins are the result of a long series of business, wise business decisions. Zoning is perhaps one of those, but certainly not the only. He states, quote, "These projects are risky, and a profit commensurate to the risk has to be attainable in order to drive developers to these projects," end quote. Now, I'm certainly not opposed to anybody making a profit, and nor am I opposed to any development, but the goal of zoning is to create livable neighborhoods. It is not to ensure the profit margin for developers. His need for a specific project should not weigh more heavily than the common good in this case. His second reason suggests it is a question of balancing community needs versus community wants. Without a question, in Missoula, there is a need for affordable housing. We absolutely agree. He states, quote, "36 families, single mothers, couples, and retirees will be housed by this development," end quote. But if you look at the lot size and the house footprint in the development plans, you really have to question, are these family-friendly homes? And with a price tag of $250,000 to $325,000 per unit, a single average income in Missoula, a single income earner would never be able to afford a mortgage. So this development does not really answer those community needs. So for that reason, these reasons, I strongly urge you to reject this zoning proposal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McKinnon. Anyone else? We're all breaking the three-minute boundary, ladies and gentlemen, so I might just remind you.
I'll go for three.
Thank you.
My name's Bob Scogly. I live about a mile and a half west of this area. I have kids that have been through Hellgate Elementary. I actually have no problem with the density of the development, I think, looking at what's going on just on the other side of Flynn Lane that's going on already. My concern, and Ms. Baker's presentation said, the surrounding infrastructure is already adequate for handling the traffic in the area, and the existing infrastructure is entirely inadequate. Flynn Lane was not designed to be a high-traffic road. It's very narrow. It makes a 90-degree turn and meets Broadway in one of the most dangerous intersections. I got a report from the state highway department, there was one fatality and six serious injuries there in the last three years. I know there's a long-term plan to fix this. I've talked to the people at the county, and the county says, "Well, the city owns some of it, it's annexed it now." My concern is Flynn Lane is extremely unsafe now, and this does nothing to address that. I know there's a long-term plan, but I still don't know what the timing is on that plan, what the funding is for that plan. I'm fine with additional development of this sort in the area as long as the old, old traffic problems are addressed. Now, the county put in for a grant several years ago to extend Mary Jane through, put a traffic light on both ends, make Flynn so it only accesses the school and then this neighborhood, which would greatly reduce the traffic on Flynn. But as far as I know, nothing is happening on that, and I think before we go approving more and more dense subdivisions, we have to address the existing traffic. It's been recognized for many years by the county as a problem. Now, the city is a partner in it, and my comment is that we need to address the overall traffic, not just specifically on Siren Road, but on Flynn Lane, Mary Jane Boulevard, and then what's going to happen when England is extended and opens up a few more square miles for development in that area. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi, Steve Miller, and I have the piece of property that's to the east of this proposed development. I just want to put a face to another vote against this dense. For all the reasons that we've heard so far, I think that this RT 5.4 is too dense for our area. So, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir.
Yes, my name is Dwayne Garner. I live on Tipperary Way, which is just, but I own property that's adjacent south of the school area there, so what happens to this will affect my property eventually. And one thing, I would like to maintain the characteristic, the neighborhood, and this density will not allow that to happen. The property that's to the east or right next to Siren, on the corner, Siren and Flynn Lane, is approximately one-third of an acre per house, and I would like to see that maintained in that area, just so we have more stable families, single-dwelling families, that family houses, and these townhouses would not do that. And I also, I have, I usually see the traffic backed up all the way to the school, and we cannot afford to put another 90 cars twice a day on that road. And it's just over the top. And as far as this profit margin, I don't think that the management of our land should be carried on just by the profits of certain people. And I know the school tried to buy that land, it was approximately two years ago, two, three years ago, and they were offering up to 40, right around $45,000 an acre, and they didn't want it. They wanted 125,000 acres per acre or more, and that is why they want this school density. And if you're, if that's what they want, that's not the going price, and the neighborhood and the school district shouldn't suffer with that sort of thing because of it. I'm not against being developed, but with that density of that housing, I think it should be turned down with that density. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Garner. Anyone else this evening? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm Shanna Whittier, and I live on Tipperary Way. And I'm sorry, you put 36 houses in their units. There's going to be two cars probably, so that is 72 more cars on that road. And as Dwayne mentioned, but he forgot to mention that they, if they're going to go to town, they're going to probably go turn and go up to Hellgate and Mullen. That is a nightmare as it is now, and he mentioned how it gets backed up, and you just can't have any more. Plus, Mullen Road right now, it's a racetrack to get it, if you have to turn left to get on it to go to town. Let's don't add any more, because where do you think most of these people are going? They're going to go to town, and trying to turn left and go to town on Mullen Road is a nightmare. And one other thing that's just kind of a fun little thing to think about, let's say down here we have these 36 homes, which gives you more chance of having the police, the ambulance, or the fire truck coming. What if we had that call-out, which we do occasionally, where all three of them have to come at once, and school is letting out? What nightmare would that be? Would our children be safe? I don't think so. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Whittier. Anyone else this evening? Yes, sir.
Hi there. Ted Schuster, I also live on Tipperary Way. I had a little spiel written up, but a lot of it has already been said tonight, so I just wanted to say, you know, a couple of things I've heard tonight deal with, the proposed zoning is like some other zoning in the maps that have been shown here. I just want to remind everybody, a lot of those areas, those subdivisions, are, the centers of those are three-quarters of a mile away from this spot. And, you know, I think that this particular 6.5 acres needs to be looked as an isolated chunk of land that has established, you know, landowners around it. And, you know, I understand the growth policy, but in this case, you know, this would be a good one to finally say no to. We can't compare this parcel to, you know, some of the areas over by the movie theater and such.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Anyone else care to comment this evening? All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members?
I was wondering if staff knew what the density of Scott Street Village is on the north side as a comparison. Mary, do you know?
Taking in, this is Ms. McCray.
Mary McCray with Development Services. No, I'm afraid I don't have that number in my head, what that density is.
Ms. Armstrong?
Ms. Baker, can you speak to how much open space or conservation land is around this development, as well as whether or not, and I don't know if I have the name of the street right, if Bell Tower can ever be connected through?
So if you are looking at this, my understanding is that where CRR1 is shown here, and also this parcel, those are in conservation easements. I believe they are 48 acres. So those 48 acres are in conservation easements and won't be developed. I don't, I can't answer your question about Bell Tower Road.
Is there a possibility that the open space requirement would be dropped from this conditional request, the 11%? request, the 11% and allow for more density? Can that, I know sometimes that can be done and sometimes it can't, depending on the case.
The request before you is what you would approve, and it would have to be built with those 11, with that 11%, as has been shown to you this evening.
Further questions? Mr. Wilkins?
So is there any chance that we don't do this zoning, that apartment houses could be built here or anything like that? Is that a possibility?
If you don't approve the zoning, then this reverts back to county land at C-RR1. If somebody wanted to propose apartments, we would come back with another annexation, zoning upon annexation.
So that could happen, maybe.
It could happen as a separate process, but not as a result of this.
Thanks.
Ms. McCray?
The residential 3 to 11 dwelling units per acre, any future annexation and zoning upon annexation would have to comply with the growth policies, land use designation of residential 3 to 11. And there are no zoning districts that the city has currently that would allow multi-dwelling within that land use designation.
Further questions? Mr. Von Losberg?
I think, is it Paul? You mentioned the first TED development. We, there have been several of these. Are you talking about with the new regulations, when we went through the process of?
Yes.
With some of the abuses that happened? Okay. Just wanted to be clear.
Further questions?
Can I add to that? There have been a number of town home exemption developments that have been reviewed and approved by the city. This is the first one where it's over 10 units, which is why it's the conditional use in front of you.
Thank you, Ms. Baker. Further questions? No, Ms. Hetal? Sorry.
I only have seven weeks. I have a quick question. I don't know if Ms. McCray can answer this, but I recall Kevin Slavart mentioning that density would eventually warrant a light at this intersection. And so I'm wondering, there's a certain point where you have a certain amount of traffic that would warrant putting a light there. I know it's going to happen on George Elmer, but is this one of those as well?
Mary McCray with Development Services. Are you speaking about Flynn and Mullen? I don't believe Flynn is designed as a collector. There is, so as you exit this property on Siren, you could take a left and go up Flynn and connect to England Boulevard, which takes you over to Reserve Street. Mary Jane Boulevard, which runs north-south through Pleasant View Homes, is expected to also connect down to Mullen, and that would be a light there. George Elmer is the other light.
The county plan at one point included a temporary light at Flynn and, sorry.
Yeah, thanks. Further questions? All right, seeing none.
So the first motion of perhaps two is to move to adopt a resolution extending the corporate limits of the City of Missoula to annex within the boundaries of the city a certain parcel of land described as tract 1-B-2 of certificate of survey number 4204, commonly known as Hellgate Gardens, and zone the property RT 5.4 in the city, all located in the northwest quarter of Section 18 Township 13 North, Range 19 West, Principal, Meridian, Montana. Easy for me to say.
And that motion is in order. Is there a discussion on the motion? Is Hetal?
I kind of have a general comment. Would that be okay? Okay. So as most of you know, I'm a real estate agent, and I just pulled available single-family and townhouses in all of Missoula City. There are currently 41 listings between the price range of 245 and 305, so, sorry, 245,000 and 305,000. So of those 41, seven of them are to be built. So there are 34 homes available that are not in a very specific area, just Missoula City, but not like a certain neighborhood. So just to give you reference, I am currently working with seven groups of buyers right now, and there are 644 agents in Missoula. Whether or not they're active or not is not necessarily the issue, but the point is, I'm currently working with seven. In comparison, so of those 34 available listings, in Flynn Ranch, one of them, one of them is on a 2,400-square-foot lot. Another one in Flynn Ranch is on 5,663-square-foot lot. There are two listings in Pleasant View. One is on 5890, another one is on 5619. And there is currently a listing in 44 Ranch to be built on a 4,400-square-foot lot. And in reference to Ms. West's question about Scott Street, they are roughly 4,100 to 5,200-square-foot lots. So just as a point of reference, this actually does, so Flynn Ranch, Pleasant View, 44 Ranch being surrounding neighborhoods, actually do reflect this sort of zoning and build out. So I just wanted to point that out. And we're at a huge deficit for property, so I will be supporting this.
Mr. Wilkins on the motion?
So I think I'm going to support the motion. I heard that people won't stay in the 5.4 area because it's not family-oriented. But the Lewis and Clark area is 5.4. I don't have the T. In other words, I don't get the townhouses. That's the part that bothers me. But we got people clamoring to come into Lewis and Clark area. And I see families that's lived there 30 some years or more, including myself. So I think 5.4 is a, is a good thing, and I also think that it gives room for a family. It gives room for a front yard, gives room for a backyard. It gives room for the dog. It gives room for three-year-old kids. And the schools right there, it's kind of, almost sounds something like where I live. So like I said, the only thing that really bothers me are the townhouses, the duplex-type thing. But I think this is a good development, so I'm going to support it.
Further discussion? Ms. Marler?
I appreciate all the neighbors coming to talk. I'm going to support this also, but I understand that it is hard to see this kind of change happening right across the street from you. And I want to specifically say how grateful I am that some of the immediate neighbors have conservation easements on their agricultural land. That is, we're going to be running out of agricultural land sometime, and by putting that conservation easement on those places, that's giving up development rights and future profit and all these things for, for certain other benefits. And I really appreciate that. It does mean that that land is not available for more houses, and it's just a fact that we are going to have to, you know, have more places where the houses are built more densely. Personally, I would probably be more comfortable, be more comfortable than some other people on council to have even higher zoning than what's put in place, but I think, you know, I'm not going to push for that. I'm not going to push for some weird thing where we get rid of the parkland dedication and get cash to develop the other park or, you know, some things that the developer suggested that we might want to do. I think having these houses within walking distance to the school is good. I think a lot of the frustrations that I'm hearing, which are, I've been out at the school at pickup and drop-off times before. There are some, some traffic issues there, and it's kind of hard for, for the city to, to address those on our own, because it's kind of in the process of the city and county coming together, and so it takes some, it's going to, it's going to need some collaboration and a new, more modern round of street planning. And I think some stoplights and stuff are needed there. I, what, what sounds like, and it's easy for me to say this, because I don't have kids that go to elementary school, but why aren't those kids riding their bikes to school? Probably because there's not a perfect bike lane or something. But I do understand that this is, it's hard when this happens, and we haven't done a subdivision on city council in a long time. It's, I forgot how uncomfortable it is, because it does make some people unhappy. But thank you again for coming, and all of these comments are important as some of the future kinks get worked out.
Mr. DeBari?
I appreciate Ms. Marler's comments. Very well said. I think for me, the argument that resonates most, or I guess the discussion point, is that of the greater transportation network, and we all understand that that is a work in progress, and it definitely needs some work. I totally understand where the folks in the neighborhood are coming from. I've had a chance to visit this, this site, and, and I'm looking forward to the opportunity where we can make some of those transportation improvements. And sometimes it's not a comfortable place to be, but, and it may seem like the cart gets put before the horse, but it is a situation where the development that occurs there will be the catalyst for the kinds of changes that we need to see, and also provide the funding to implement the changes we'd like to see. So I am also going to be supporting the motion.
Ms. West?
I think many of my colleagues have said many of the same things I was going to, but I just think that these, this might be the first TED development that's coming through this conditional review process, but these have been happening all over town, and some of them are considerably larger than this one. And I think that this new process at least gives neighbors a heads-up of what's coming and allows some level of engagement that we didn't have previously. That being said, there have been a few of these different sizes in my neighborhood as well, and I think that the, the location for this one, being close to schools and being, you know, relatively close to a grocery store, and I do understand the lack of maybe connectivity through this neighborhood. We hear a lot of things about that. I do think that this is a good project where it is and a good zoning for where it is, and so I'll be supporting it.
Ms. Brown?
I'm going to support the project. I echo everything that I've heard tonight from my fellow counselors. I appreciate folks coming, coming out tonight. I, I know that you're disappointed, and I appreciate you coming out, and, you know, we hear what you're saying. I'm going to support this project because I think it, you know, I would like to see a little more density. I agree with Councilwoman Marler and Hetal that we need to be building more housing, especially as we preserve our agricultural land. And I think it's, it's nice to have housing so close to the school, so I support the project. Thanks to folks for coming out, and have a good night.
Further discussion? Ms. Basera?
I appreciate everyone coming tonight, and I would like to encourage both the developer and the neighbors to work with the, with the school. I know there are some grants at the federal level that can be tapped into for making at least this area a little bit safer for the, for the schools. I also think it's important to provide different types of housing in Missoula, because there are different incomes and different types of family. So I will be supporting this project too.
Further discussion? All right, by virtue of the zoning protests, the, to pass the motion will require eight votes this evening, and we'll do a roll call. Ms.
Okay, on the resolution to annex and zone, Basera?
Yes.
Basera votes yes. Bentley?
Yes.
Bentley votes yes. Kares?
Yes.
Kares votes yes. DeBari?
Yes.
DeBari votes yes. Hetal?
Yes.
Hetal votes yes. Jones?
Yes.
Jones votes yes. Marler?
Yes.
Marler votes yes. Von Losberg?
Yes.
Von Losberg votes yes. West?
Yes.
West votes yes. Wilkins?
Yes.
Wilkins votes yes. Armstrong?
Yes.
Armstrong votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? Eleven eyes and one absent.
And the annexation and zoning are approved.
The second motion is to approve the conditional use request for a town home exemption development of more than 10 units at Hellgate Gardens, Siren Road west of Flynn Lane, in accordance with the city zoning ordinance, Title 20, Sections 20.05.040D, 20.05.050, 20.40.180, and 20.85.070, based on the findings of fact in the staff report and subject to, to the conditions of approval.
And that motion is in order. Is there a discussion on the motion? Mr. Von Losberg?
I didn't comment before. I was, my comments were largely duplicative, would have been duplicative of my colleagues, but wanted to mention that I know the developer has pursued some ideas for a community garden within the development, and there's been some commentary about the amount of space. I, that's worked very well in other areas. It can be a great community binding and bonding sort of effort, and I'm pleased to see it and overall supportive of the project.
Further discussion? Mr. DeBari?
Actually, I have a couple of questions and then a comment. Wondering if we can go, Jenny, to one of the aerials? Maybe this, yeah, that'll work for the time being. And I think this question, well, I'll just ask it, and then whomever the correct person is. Is, is there an opportunity to connect to the roundabout from the south from this proposed town home exemption? Will, will the road on the west edge of the town home exemption be able to connect into the roundabout?
I'm going to show you the site plan, which shows where you can go in and out of it.
Excellent. Thanks.
So Road A will allow connection to the roundabout, and that is one point of access onto Siren. And then at the other end, Road C will also allow a connection onto Siren.
Okay. And then Road B, I assume that that's going to be built out as half a road? Is that correct, or will it?
That will be built as a full road. It will be 28 feet of paving and parking on one side.
But only sidewalks and boulevard on the north side, correct?
There is a sidewalk as well there, and there's a boulevard, so. Sidewalk and boulevard. So the entire development has a boulevard around it, and then a sidewalk on the inside of that.
Those are my questions. As far as comments, I read with interest Mr. Hertz's email, and I just want to, I guess, thank him and Paul for the kind words and working with Development Services and the opportunity to, to have a meaningful conversation about different concerns that may have come up during this process. And, and I appreciate the fact that, that you, Paul, and Adam, I guess, had worked with Development Services and, I think, put together a, a nice proposal. And I guess I would go back to the, the one thing that I mentioned before during LUP, and that is to put a little wiggle in the sidewalk.
Further discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we've had a public hearing, we'll have a roll call vote. Ms. Raybuck?
Okay, on the conditional use request. Bentley?
Yes.
Bentley votes yes. Kares?
Yes.
Kares votes yes. DeBari?
Yes.
DeBari votes yes. Hetal?
Yes.
Hetal votes yes. Jones?
Yes.
Jones votes yes. Marler?
Yes.
Marler votes yes. Von Losberg?
Yes.
Von Losberg votes yes. West?
Yes.
West votes yes. Wilkins?
Yes.
Wilkins votes yes. Armstrong?
Yes.
Armstrong votes yes. Basera?
Yes.
Basera votes yes. Would any of you like to change your vote? It's eleven eyes and one absent.
And the conditional use is approved. I will offer my gratitude as well. I appreciate your thoughtfulness this evening, folks. Thank you for coming out. We'll take a five-minute recess, so folks can do what they need to do, and we'll be The next item of business is a conditional use request at 2350 Reserve Street. This is gasoline and fuel sales use and pinch hitting for Mr. Larson this evening. Ms. McCray?
Good evening, Mary McCray with Development Services. This conditional use request is from Rosar's Supermarkets, represented by Craig Schaefer of Morrison Merrily, to locate a gasoline and fuel sales use and canopy with five pump islands and 10 fueling stations within the existing Rosar's parking lot. within the existing Rosar's parking lot. The subject property is located at 2350 Reserve Street at the corner of Reserve Street and South Avenue and it's outlined in red on this slide. The site contains an existing enterprise commercial use, including Rosar's Supermarket, Good Americano Coffee Kiosk, and the Rock Chip Windshield Repair. The gasoline and fuel sales use would be located at the southwest corner of the parcel in the area outlined in blue on this slide. An enterprise commercial use is any commercial development that contains 30,000 square feet of floor area, either in one building or multiple buildings on the same site. However, tonight's request is not an expansion of the enterprise commercial use because it is not expanding the existing footprint and does not increase the required parking. Both the coffee kiosk and windshield repair will be relocated if the gasoline and fuel sales conditional use is approved, which will require a zoning compliance permit or building permit. The parking lot is entirely paved with no interior parking lot landscaping and minimal perimeter parking lot landscaping located adjacent to Reserve Street. I'll follow with a couple slides of photos. This is the photo of the front facade of Rosar's from Reserve Street. The existing facade has a gabled awning and stone pillars at the entrance. These photos were taken just west of the South Avenue driveway approach, in which you can see the windshield repair service better up in the upper left photo at the corner of Reserve and South Avenue. And the other two photos are of the surface parking lot. The applicable regional plan is the Our Missoula City Growth Policy 2035, which recommends a land use designation of community mixed use. The community mixed use designation includes a broad range of functions, including retail, education, financial institutions, and general service activities that serve the larger community as well as adjacent neighborhoods. The applicable vicinity plan is the 1995 Reserve Street Area Plan Update, which recommends a land use designation of highway-heavy commercial. The intent of highway-heavy commercial is to accommodate uses with special or extensive land use needs and impacts such as support services to business or industry, uses which are automobile or heavy equipment related, and uses that support highway travel. Reserve Street is one of the primary locations for these uses. Now I'll cover the zoning. The property is zoned C14 Neighborhood Commercial and contains an existing enterprise commercial use. The gasoline and fuel sales is a conditional use with additional use and building design standards, which I'll address later in my presentation. Uh, this is the overall site plan. The applicant proposes to construct a gasoline and fuel sales canopy, um, over five pump islands containing 10 fueling stations. The proposed canopy will not be associated with a convenience store kiosk and all sales will be managed by Rosar's. Each proposed pump island will contain a service button for patrons needing assistance, or patrons may visit the main store if additional assistance is required. The site contains 264 off-street parking spaces and eight ADA spaces, which exceeds the parking requirement. Here's a close-up of the portion of the site for the gasoline and fuel sales. The applicant has proposed a gasoline and fuel sales development area highlighted in blue, including the nearest driveway approach from South Avenue and dry aisles north and south of the canopy. This is the area of the site that will be directly impacted by the proposed use. The applicant's also provided a disturbance area, which is the portion of the site that will be disturbed during construction if the conditional use is approved and that area is outlined in red. The disturbance area is used to calculate the necessary site improvements, including landscaping. Development Services Engineering Division provided comment that the driveway approach located within the development area currently does not meet ADA design standards. Condition of approval number two requires the applicant to amend the site disturbance area to include the nearest driveway approach and to reconstruct the driveway in order to meet all current ADA standards. Next, I'll address the Title 20 use and specific building standards for gasoline and fuel sales uses. So gasoline and fuel sales uses must be located on parcels with frontage on an arterial street. Both South Avenue and Reserve Street are arterial streets. Gas pumps must be set back at least 30 feet from all property lines and 50 feet from property lines abutting our zoning districts or parcels occupied by residential dwelling units. The proposed canopy is set back a minimum of 30 feet from both South and Reserve, and there are no R zoning districts or dwelling units within 50 feet. No restroom entrance doors may be located on the exterior of the building. There is no associated convenience store kiosk, so there is no exterior restroom entrance door. Pump island canopies may not exceed 22 feet in height and the elevations submitted in the conditional use application do not show the canopy exceeding 22 feet. Compliance with zoning, fire, and engineering standards will be confirmed prior to building permit per condition of approval number one. Next, I'll cover the proposed landscaping and the Title 20 requirements. Sites that contain an enterprise commercial use are required to provide 20% general site landscaping when new development occurs. However, general site landscaping is only required to serve the expanded or modified area, not the entire site. The applicant submitted landscaping plan indicates that the proposed project will meet the general site landscaping. The provided disturbance area does not extend to the nearest driveway approach located on South Avenue. Condition of approval number two requires the nearest driveway on South Avenue to be included in the disturbance area. And condition of approval number three requires the street frontage landscaping to extend to the driveway approach on South Avenue. In addition, sites that contain an enterprise commercial use are required to provide 20-foot-deep street frontage landscaping areas. The applicant's provided a landscaping plan for the proposed disturbance area, which indicates a 10-foot-deep street frontage landscaping area, which does not meet this requirement. Missoula Parks and Recreation provided comments stating general support of the proposed part, project. However, Missoula Parks expressed concern that the provided street frontage landscaping does not meet Title 20 standards for sites that contain an enterprise commercial use. Parks recommends that the applicant provide street frontage landscaping along the entire South Avenue right-of-way. Title 20 provides an option for alternative compliance with the landscape section that allows an applicant to vary from the landscaping requirements when a landscape architect submits a landscape plan. In summary, the staff report includes two conditions of approval regarding landscaping. So, condition of approval number three requires the applicant to amend the landscape plan to extend the street frontage landscaping to the driveway approach on South Avenue. And, uh, this was green on my slide, but it's this line here shows it extending to the driveway approach. And condition of approval number four requires the applicant to amend the landscape plan to increase the street frontage landscaping to be 20 feet deep and provide the minimum number of trees and shrubs as listed in Title 20. So this recommend, recommendation would preclude the use of a landscape architect to minimize the required landscaping. Here's some photos of the surrounding uses. They include gasoline and fuel sales located west of the property and commercial businesses and restaurants on the north, south, and east sides. Now I'd like to review the compliance with the conditional use criteria shown on this slide. The gasoline and fuel sales use will be a 24-hour self-service, which has similar hours of operation as other gasoline and fuel sales uses in the city of Missoula. The pedestrian facilities will remain the same and are not planned to be altered. However, the additional landscaping on South Avenue, uh, will be an improvement and will provide comfort for pedestrians along the corridor. The parcel currently has excess parking beyond the minimum number of spaces required. With the addition of the gasoline and fuel sales use, the parcel will have sufficient parking facilities for the entire site to satisfy the zoning requirements. And all outdoor lighting for this project will be subject to the Missoula outdoor lighting ordinance. Next couple of slides, I'll go over the staff recommended conditions. Based on the review criteria, staff recommends four conditions of approval. Condition of approval number one requires the building permit plans to substantially comply with the approved conditional use site plans, and the plan should comply with all applicable portions of Title 20. And condition of approval number two requires the nearest driveway approach located on South Avenue be included in the disturbance area. Conditions of approval three and four require the street frontage landscaping to be extended to the nearest driveway on South Avenue and be a minimum of 20 feet deep with the minimum numbers of trees and shrubs required by Title 20. This slide shows the, the additional factors that council may consider in reviewing a conditional use. Both the review criteria and factors were issued with the staff report and are uploaded to Sire. The factors include ensuring new buildings and structures are located to create a positive relationship with their environment, that site design addresses building orientation related to open space, light, and views, that building structures and uses are compatible with adjacent properties and uses in terms of physical design elements, building materials, screening, and any other design elements considered important by city council, that the project will be functional, attractive, and safe for pedestrians, bikes, vehicular access and parking, and consideration of agency and public testimony. So prior to the Land Use and Planning Committee meeting, Councilman Debary requested staff provide additional draft conditions for council's consideration based on the factors to be considered. Staff issued a memo on November 6th with four additional conditions, numbered five through eight in the memo. Condition number five limits the number of pumps to four instead of the proposed five. Condition number six requires the gasoline canopy to have a gabled roof and masonry column similar to the entry gable at Rosar's entry. And condition number seven limits the lighting, which is similar to conditions approved for the most recently approved gasoline and fuel sales use on Brook Street. Condition of approval number eight limits the signage in a way similar to conditions approved for the most recently approved gasoline and fuel sales use on Brook Street. So, this is a, has a couple photos. The top one is the existing Rosar's facade showing the, uh, gabled entry portico. And the bottom photo is the proposed canopy. And this, uh, photo is, shows a gabled canopy over, for a gasoline and fuel sales use at the Missoula Fresh Market on Broadway Street. At the Land Use and Planning Committee on Wednesday, November 8th, the committee expressed concern regarding traffic at the South Avenue driveway approach, as well as traffic control within the parking lot. Staff prepared a second memo dated November 9th with two additional conditions for council's consideration. Condition number nine requires the applicant to provide parking lot landscape islands at both ends of each parking lot row in order to distinguish between dry aisles and parking rows within the whole parking lot. And, sorry, there's two nines there. The bottom one should be a 10. In the memo, it's a 10. Condition number 10 requires the applicants to provide plans for and install traffic control devices if warranted at the South Avenue driveway approach, such as right-in, right-out divider, subject to approval of MDT and the city engineer. So this is a site plan that shows, uh, additional of, um, parking lot islands that are at the end of each row. One of the concerns expressed is that cars typically park in the eastern half of the lot and then as people, as they come and go, they just drive diagonally across other parking spaces to get to either one of the exits. So add the addition of parking lot islands on the end would help define where the parking rows are versus the dry aisles and may, might provide some organization to that parking lot. And then the blue square shows the area of the South Avenue exit and that could have a, uh, they call it a right turn in and out, uh, pork chop, I think is what it's called, the technical term. And that would have to be approved by MDT and city engineer. So there were a number of public comments received in the last couple of days and their concerns with the project are conflicts with sustainable transportation go, goals. And Drew spoke with the MPO and they couldn't list any goal that would prohibit new gasoline and fuel sales. Um, another concern was multiple gasoline and fuel sales exist within the area and traffic concerns at South and Reserve. There were a few comments received in support of the proposed use. So in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the conditional use subject to the four conditions of approval in the staff report. And, uh, Craig Schaefer's here and he has a small presentation. And there are other representatives from Rosar's and the petroleum company, Granite Petroleum.
Thank you, Ms. McCray. Mr. Schaefer?
In case it blows up. Thank you, Mary. Craig Schaefer, Morrison Merrily, um, representing Rosar's Supermarkets, um, for this proposed fuel sales conditional use. And just wanted to run through a real quick, um, background. There were some questions at the committee and some issues. We thought a, a quick three-slide narrative might catch us all up and, and get us all on the same page. Some of the, some of the factors that Rosar's considered, um, when, when going after a fuel sales use on their property was to add some convenience for their existing shoppers. Um, potentially bring in a small percentage of, of new shoppers, though the, the theory is that most fuel sales users will be people that were already using the grocery store. Um, and then probably the biggest one is to be able to compete as, as kind of a Montana business with the bigger national supermarkets that are doing fuel sales and groceries. Um, the operation, full buildout would be proposed with five pumps, which I think Drew covered in committee, but five pumps consists of 10 fueling stations, essentially two handles per pump. Um, fuel sales, Mary mentioned this, only at the site. Um, if anybody needs any help or snacks or anything like that, they have to either go, they have to go into the, the, uh, main store to get help or push a call button and somebody will come out and take care of them. So there won't be any kiosk out on the main fuel sales site. Um, there are no TVs planned at the pumps. That was a concern that came up at committee. Um, estimating 20 to 40 new customers that, that wouldn't necessarily be shopping at Rosar's in a given day, stopping by to potentially fill up with fuel. Access and traffic circulation in the site, we would anticipate most of the fuel traffic to either be coming over from the existing parking area, um, through Reserve Street on the main access out there or from South Avenue to the south of the site. Um, we think with, with the configuration of current fuel sales at the Reserve Street-South Avenue intersection that, that Rosar's picking up what we might call pass-by trips, um, could potentially reduce some of the through and left-turn traffic at the Reserve Street-South Avenue intersection because they'd be able to come from the east, enter onto the Rosar site, and then leave without having to have gone through the intersection. Um, South Avenue traffic counts from MDT show about 14,000 ADT average daily trips. The store is estimated right now to be 1,800 to 2,000 customers in a day. So if all of those customers came from South Avenue, they would comprise about 14% of that overall traffic that we're seeing on South Avenue from a daily perspective. So it's a pretty small, um, small percentage of the overall use of South Avenue. Um, at peak use, we did speak at committee a little bit of- At peak use, we did speak at committee a little bit about this. At peak use, left turns from the site, both onto Reserve and onto South, would be very tricky. But as we'll see in a photo here that's coming up, we think at many other times of the day, a left turn is completely safe and acceptable to get out either onto Reserve or South Avenue. We've had Joe Myers, who's here with Granite Petroleum, do kind of a trip projection estimate based not on national traffic estimation estimates, but more from a market rate on fuel sales, and we'll have him kind of go through his estimate here.
Joe Myers with Granite Petroleum. What I did in that slide right there was I represented what we perceive to be our volume. Trip count is obviously governed by volume, so I did two scenarios, the top one being 85,000 gallons per month, the lower one being 100,000. Those were based on prior histories I've had with projects very similar to this, and even some we've had with Rosar's itself. About 10 to 15% new traffic is generated in one of these facilities. So what we did is we took that percentage of 10 to 15% and modeled, well, what are the trips per day? In the 85,000 gallon model, if it was 10%, it would be about 28 more vehicles if they filled up with 10 gallons. In this region, we had a lot of SUVs, a lot of heavy trucks. Obviously, in an urban area like Seattle, that might be higher where we have smaller cars and many more fuel-efficient cars, et cetera. With the highest basis maybe being 43 cars a day. What I did then was I eliminated real early morning activity from 5:00 to 7:00 a.m., the store hours, and everything after 7:00. So I wanted to condense that car trip to give us a view of what the average car per hour might be. And again, using the 85,000 gallons, it would be anywhere from two to four cars per hour more. If you go down to the bottom one, if we were to do, say, 100,000 gallons a month, the trips per day would be anywhere from 33 to 50 new trips a day. Again, remember that 85% of the likely sales are already people accessing the site. That trips per hour between 7:00 and 7:00 would be between three and four, maybe five. Now, obviously, those are averages. It might be more than that, but you can see it's quite nominal. And so that's what that represents on that slide. Thank you.
Thank you, Joel. So that's, that's kind of the background, and then we'd like to go through some conditions that we'd like to request, either revisions or some changes to as you go through your voting process there. Condition number four is the first one. We believe that it says that the landscaping shall be 20 feet deep and meet Title 20, and we would like to move forward as though we were just meeting Title 20. So we could either not include that condition in the vote, or a potential revision that we could see is just that the building application, the building permit application shall include an amended landscape plan in compliance with Title 20. Additional condition number five would limit the overall buildout of the pump islands to four pump islands instead of five. The applicant does anticipate four pumps initially, but would like the ability to add a fifth one if the market supported that. Additional condition number six requires the use of a gabled roof as opposed to the flat columns seen across the street. As presented at committee, the flat roof provides an open design cross-station visibility and better sightlines and security of the site in addition to preventing sliding snow from the snow and drainage issues during the wintertime. The flat roof would keep the snow up on top of there. Additional condition number eight D states dynamic display signage is not permitted except for fuel pricing signage per Title 20. And again, we'd request that if that is in fact what Title 20 says, then, then we should just be held to Title 20 as opposed to requiring it as an additional condition. So we could either, we would either request to delete that or revise it to just state that signage conforms with Title 20 during the building permit stage. Here's a couple of slides that kind of go up and down Reserve Street, gives you a feel for what, what the adjoining signs look like. And then at the end on the right is a, an existing sign that Rosar's has used on a previous project like this, and the one on the left is the one that we currently believe complies with Title 20 and that we would like to propose for this project. Additional condition number nine, Mary showed a graphic of the parking lot islands proposed potentially at the end of the drive aisles. And I just, back through the pre-application process, when we initially met with city engineering and planning and talked about where this project fit on the site and what the, what the impacts of it were to the site and around, we discussed development limits. So in our initial application, or draft application, we might call it, we drew some disturbance limits on the site. City engineering and planning put their heads together and provided us back with a revised development area in addition to the disturbance area. And it was our understanding at that time that that's, that would be the exterior limits of the project. I was clear with, with engineering and planning staff at the time that if, if the entire parking lot was going to be included or could be included in required infrastructure improvements, that we needed to communicate that to the client right then, the applicant, excuse me, so that they could weigh the financial implications of potentially having to make improvements throughout the entire parking lot and, and further outside of the property. So with that established development area, the applicant made the decision to move forward with this project. I think, it's hard to say at this point, but I, I wonder if we would be here at this point if we knew we were talking about the entire parking lot with improvements. I'd also like to point out that there's been no agency comment, and none of the public comments specifically addressed traffic circulations outside of the Coffee Hut issues that seem to be a commonly commented item. A graphic that we've been using here, aerial photo of the ShopCo and Rosar's complexes with the South Avenue and Reserve Street access shown fairly clearly. We're guessing this is sometime 10 o'clock-ish in the morning in July, and you can see Rosar's is, we think that's a medium traffic loading. There's already some traffic, or there's still some traffic maybe on Reserve, but South is predominantly empty. Also, the, the drive aisles seem to be fairly well delineated with cars on the Rosar's lot. And then to speak to the next slide, an improvement out in South Avenue to prevent the left-hand turn from the center southern approach here, it could be there, but there doesn't seem to be any reason to me to stop somebody from taking a left out of either one of those approaches on, on South or Reserve. So then additional condition number 10 speaks to that as well, where the applicants would provide plans and install traffic control devices if warranted in South Avenue, such as right-in, right-out. And based on that, that last analysis and the dash blue line that represents the development area on the site plan, we, we don't believe that additional condition number 10 is necessary. So in summary here, we, we went through the 20 conditional use criteria, and we feel that this application has met all of these criteria. It complies with applicable standards of the zoning ordinance. It's in the best, it's in the interest of the public convenience and won't have a significant adverse impact on the general welfare of the neighborhood or community. It's compatible with the character of the surrounding area in terms of site planning, building scale, and project design. It has operating characteristics that are compatible with the surrounding area in terms of operation, outdoor lighting, noise, and traffic generation, and it will not have a significant adverse impact on traffic safety or comfort, including all modes of transport. So also here with us tonight, we have Mike Shirts and Ken Grow with Rosar's, as well as Jerry. I'm going to have to skip your last name. Jerry is the general manager of the Missoula store, and along with Joe Myers, who I introduced earlier, we're all here to help answer questions and, and help get everybody information that they need tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. With that, I will open the public hearing. Would anyone care to comment on this conditional use?
Hello. Good evening. My name's Jerry Kikeandall. I'm the store manager at Rosar's, have been for the past 10 years. I would just like, of course, to speak in favor of this proposal and just say that it would add great diversity to our, to our business model and, and, and provide us with the ability to offer something different to the public, something, something in addition to what we offer. It would be value-added to our business and our operation. It has been proven to be a successful part of the grocery business model and the retail business model in general. If you look at one of the best retailers in the world, Costco's doing it with great success as well. There's obviously a number of different advantages to be able to, to be able to offer fuel to our customers and tie it in all sorts of promotions and gaining new customers, so I would just like to add that.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening? With that, I will close the public hearing. Are there questions from council members? Mr. Debary?
This is for the-
Everybody?
Excuse me?
Go ahead.
Thank you. This is for the applicant. I wanted to bring up two points that came up during LUP. The first one was associated with a suggestion that Ms. Jones had regarding entrance, the entrance from South Avenue, and I made the suggestion that we perhaps reorient the pumps so that instead of going the angle that you have them, we turn them north, let me see, northeast, southwest. Is there any interest in, in doing that to help with the traffic flow in the, in the parking lot?
Show me its orientation with these questions.
All right, if I plug a-
Plug them 180.
Plug a thumb drive in here.
You could go back to Mary's presentation, too.
Oh, yes. So I think we're talking turning them 90 degrees right there from where they're at.
Exactly.
I, I think from a, I'll let Joe speak from a fuel sales perspective. From a traffic perspective, it puts that, that pump in the corner at a funky angle to where you'd have to, can you see what I'm saying there? So if we put this pump at this angle, is that about right, Mr. Debary? So to enter that with the car, you'd be coming this way? I don't, I don't think we're, we're against it. We, we did look at it a little initially and laid them out as though you were sweeping through the corner of the site from an engineering perspective. I don't, I don't think we'd have any major pullback from it. This one just seems like it had a little more flow to it.
Yeah, I was just trying to address Mrs. Jones' point about traffic flow, especially coming in from South Avenue, and either way, I mean, you would just, it would just reorient traffic a little bit so that they would be going to the north and then swinging around to the west and then down to the southwest.
Right. Coming off of Reserve towards-
Yeah, rather than, so it just may help. I'm just throwing out there as a suggestion, and you guys can think about whether you think that'll, that'll work. I just wanted to know whether you had considered it and would still consider it.
We had Mr. Debary, in summary, what we were trying to achieve was keeping the traffic off Reserve, coming through this way and here, and circumventing any interaction in here. So we're just trying to keep in general the traffic out of the perimeter.
Yeah, that's an interesting thought. I mean, I would suspect actually that most people would be coming in off of South Avenue because you'd be driving past it if you were going north on Reserve to enter. But anyhow, like I said, just throwing that out there. And then the second question I have for you is, I know that Ms. Kares brought up, and Ms. Marler brought up the idea of some other traffic, other parking lot improvements, and in fact, there's a proposed condition or suggested condition that, about that. And I was just curious if you had given any thought to coming in and discussing with Development Services a schedule or plan for upgrades and improvements to the parking lot to, to address some of those, perhaps in lieu of a condition here?
With Friday having been a holiday, it was, it was tough to have any conversations with, with city staff from here to there, and we didn't get an opportunity to discuss conditions nine and 10. Certainly would be, as far as you're talking, like maybe an overall plan for the parking area, hasn't been discussed. It's not, I wouldn't imagine, off the table. Two business days since the committee hearing really is what it comes down to.
Yeah, I didn't expect you to have a plan for it. Just, I just thought it would be, it might be a way of alleviating some of the broader concerns about circulation and improves the aesthetics and functionality of the parking lot and without having there to be an additional condition in the-
Yeah, I don't, I don't think the staff report identified any, any issues outside of the development area, and the agency review didn't identify any issues outside of the development area, and I don't believe public comment identified that either. So, and we've, we've run through, I'm not saying the Rosar's parking lot is perfect, but we've run through the, the entire process, and, and last Wednesday was the first time that we really started talking about that outside.
I have Ms. West, Ms. Jones, Ms. Hettle, Ms. Marler. Ms. West?
Thank you. So I just wanted to confirm that the, the pumps would be operational then only when Rosar's is open? Is that correct? No?
24 hours a day.
Okay. And then I have an additional question for staff, and I was just curious, hi, Mary, if, since we've had the new stormwater utility, if they have been specifically asked for comment? And just because it says on here that the wastewater division has been asked and that the wastewater pretreatment doesn't have any comment, but I was curious, since this is a parking lot which generates large quantity of stormwater, if there had been input from the utility?
The utility provided input, but primarily on the, the development area, which is outlined in blue, not for the whole parking lot itself.
Ms. Jones?
So to return to the same subject that Mr. Debary raised, for the applicant, we had discussed that, not having congestion on South Avenue as it's going west trying to pull in due to traffic congestion so they couldn't make a sharp left turn into the lane. And I sounded like you had, I had several ideas, just in terms of striping, and would you articulate that, what you possibly would do to alleviate that issue so that there isn't traffic backing up on South trying to pull in? Do you understand what I'm getting at?
Backing up on South Avenue?
If I understand your question right, it was regarding our brief conversation last week. So as traffic comes in and out of here, we typically will come in and crosshatch through zones here, and again here, and put signage up conveying, do not block the entry aisles- so that if people are coming out this way, but more importantly, coming in this way, we don't get a backup log jam right here. So that's how we would do some interior site signage within the parking lot that created a no-stopping zone.
Thanks, and that sounds very dual. It sounds like it's just a matter of paint, correct? And signage?
I'm sorry.
It sounds like it's just a matter of paint and some signage, and that's something that you're planning on doing then?
Both on the asphalt and then with a sign, a vertical sign.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kears.
Mary, could you talk to me more about condition number two and what the impacts of including the driveway in the disturbance area will mean?
That came as a result of city engineering comment and that the approach on South Avenue didn't meet ADA the way the sidewalk slopes to the street. So since improvements will need to be made there to bring it up to ADA, we wanted it included in the disturbance area because they'll have to disturb it to make those improvements.
Thank you. Follow-up. I appreciate the reminder of that. So that, just kind of repeating what you said, will only impact the accessibility at, excuse me, traffic flow at that intersection isn't addressed with this condition. That's only addressing the ADA portions of the entrance.
Correct.
Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Wilkins?
So I think I'm a little confused or I didn't hear right or something. You're talking about, I want a just right turn only, coming off South Avenue and going off reserve? You changed that? You said that they could make a left-hand turn onto reserve?
I believe they can right now.
Well, I believe they should. Your driveway is too close to the stop sign, the light, to be able to make a left-hand turn, and I thought there was a divider there.
In reserve?
Yeah.
I believe it's a open either-turn, either-direction lane right now.
Well, I'd like to see a right-hand turn only. And the same with South Avenue, a right-hand turn, coming into your place?
Coming into the place.
And going out.
And going out. Right now, you can see, I don't know if you can see it, but there's left-hand turn bays for the, there's a left-hand turn bay for the east that allows people to turn into Rose Hours, and there's a left-hand turn bay headed west that allows people to turn into Shopko. And that's open in between there. So somebody could come out of Shopko and take a left-hand turn to head west on South, and somebody else could come out of Rose Hours and take a left-hand turn to head east.
Coming out of, coming out of Rose Hours and making a left-hand turn, I think it's a dangerous thing, well, at night, but there's traffic that goes.
Absolutely.
I've seen that traffic backed up on South Avenue almost to the mall.
Absolutely. There's definitely times of day where taking a left-hand turn out of either one of those driveways isn't going to work out for you.
I think any time of day. The other thing I want to talk about is your, you talk about pedestrian safety, so I'm at your pump, and I need to go into your store, and I'm a handicapped person that don't walk too well. What keeps them cars from running over me?
That's a good question.
Because that's a pretty dangerous walk from where you're talking about to your store entrance.
I can address that question for you. If you're handicapped and you have an issue with the pump, we have call buttons by every station. Every pump station has a call button, so we can assist you if needed.
Hold up. Can you bring a water potty out to me if I need to go to the bathroom?
There's no restrooms addressed in this.
Yep.
Further questions? Ms. Armstrong.
This is regarding the condition that you're asking to, for us to remove regarding the sight line or the roof gable-ing and the style of the roof. Can someone explain to me why the sight lines would be any different underneath the canopy, regardless of what the roof line looks like?
Change the screen to our proposed. Just go back to our proposed. To the sight line. Yes? Nope. Go back to our proposed picture of our fuel station. Oh, I don't know. Back to your signage. Any of which are- We had it in there somewhere. Go back to, we had a picture of our fuel station in there in the application. Was it the other one? I don't know.
Okay. All right. To address your question, if you look at the proposed layout, we have a flat roof. So if you look through most gas stations, be it the Holiday across the street from us on reserve or any of those, it's flat, there's very few, very low profile. So you can see through, just like you could see through any of your areas. With a peak roof, you have more protrusion, okay? So it's more of an obstacle. There's some concerns with snow and ice as it melts. It's just trying to keep a low profile in a busy intersection is the intent. You have to remember that we're a convenience gas station is the offering. Our real business is groceries. So that's the intent with the low profile.
Ms. Armstrong.
So the concern is more cost savings for you rather than, I mean, the sight lines, the protrusion would be certainly minimal with a gabled roof. I think we were just looking at implementing the new design standards that the main building matched, all the accessory structures. I think that's where we were going with that. And I understand being convenience and it's cheaper to go with a flat roof. I would assume that both styles have gutters, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
Ours are internally drained, so there is no snow and ice. Everything just slowly melts and drains down internally.
Okay, thank you.
Further questions? Ms. Kears.
Mary, I was wondering about Paul, is it Paul? His question about referencing Title 20 rather than specifics in a couple of the conditions?
Yes. So the conditional use has criteria. They could just come in and get a building permit and meet Title 20 if it didn't require a conditional use. So some of the conditions, for instance, what you're approving is their plan. They're required to present a plan, a building permit, that matches what they've shown today. And in some locations, you know, we have, if your engineering asked for the disturbance area to go all the way to the South Avenue, a driveway approach. And therefore, that would mean their landscape plan should extend through that disturbance area. Street frontage landscaping in Title 20 would be required to do that. The other thing is, the other condition, reason for a condition, is what they presented doesn't meet the zoning. And so in terms of the street frontage landscaping having a 10-foot depth, that doesn't meet the zoning because it's an enterprise commercial use site, so it needs to have a 20-foot depth. They could use the alternative compliance method and hire a landscape architect that would approve minimal landscaping and less landscaping, so vary from the standards in Title 20. And staff's recommendation in the conditions, based on the review criteria, is to maintain the 20-foot depth and to provide the minimum amount of landscaping that would be required if you didn't use alternative compliance.
Okay.
Ms. Marler.
I'm going to start by mentioning that I'm inclined to send it back to committee because it seems like there's a lot to talk about. And if, so I'm going to send it back to committee, and if I hear a big outrage from people, I can withdraw that suggestion. One question, I'm going to ask my question so they're out in the public. Some of the objections that the applicant had were that they wanted the conditions to say that they'll comply with Title 20, and I had kind of a abstract question about when we're going through this process, and it's not, it's not aimed at this Rose Hours project, but if somebody's coming in for a conditional use request, can we ask for more than what's in Title 20, or do we, are we only allowed to ask for what is up to Title 20? And not one shrub more? You know, it's kind of a theoretical question.
You may ask for additional conditions beyond Title 20. That's the part of a conditional use. It's a use that might be appropriate, and you might need to condition it to help it become appropriate in that location. So for instance, the Brook Street Gas Station had a list of conditions to make it fit in better. Some of the additional conditions reflect what was required at the Brook Street Gas Station.
And those were?
So your, your conditions would be based on the factors to be considered or the review criteria. And they're, under SIRE, it's regulations that says the criteria and the factors, it's posted on SIRE.
Okay. So a short answer, we can't ask for more than what's in Title 20. I have an observation that I'm trying to parlay into a question for more discussion, and that I heard the representative of the project say that there hasn't been much public comment about interior traffic flow except related to the coffee kiosk, but we have heard a lot of discussion about traffic flow related to the coffee kiosk, so I wouldn't discount that. And as a shopper, I also have a lot of concerns about the interior flow. This is where it gets into the question. We saw staff brought, staff brought suggested conditions to have the landscaping at the end of the parking rows. It might be nice to look at that graphic now. But I wonder if there's ever been an example of somebody, like what those would do, the, I think staff suggested, well, staff suggested those to, for safety and to delineate, this is parking, this is traffic flow, this is the coffee kiosk, whatever. Is there any landscape architecture-type solution that's not like planting trees? Like is there, could it be masonry? Could it be something? Could it be old-fashioned phone boxes that you would see in, I don't know? Because if we're asking for plants, which I think would be lovely, then that's going to require irrigation and some things, you know, it gets kind of expensive. But if it, like painted yellow curbs might not be very attractive, but maybe there's something that could delineate that, just in the interest of safety. So that is kind of, kind of a very awkward question. Maybe we could talk about more in committee. I am interested in hearing what the applicants think in general about that, and I'm also interested, and we can have this discussion in committee, if, after hearing the feedback from city council, and we do represent, you know, public, we represent public comment too. I am just curious if you feel inclined to do more parking lot planning, just based on this experience of coming in front of city council? And then if a phased parking lot improvement plan might be something that we could condition over time? Probably not. I feel like usually it has to be something at the time of doing the project. But I, I'm interested in hearing back from the applicants what their reaction to this feedback has been. And I will close that ramble with saying how much I enjoy Rose Hours.
So Ms. Marler has asked if this item be returned to committee for further consideration. The issue there is that you all aren't meeting for a spell, and I'm interested in understanding from the applicant what time pressure you all might be under. And I don't intend to put you on the spot, but I think we're talking about a few weeks before December 2nd would be next, 6th would be next committee meeting. And that may inform-
I think she put the entrance. Yeah. If I understand your question right, it was regarding our brief conversation last week. So as traffic comes in and out of here, we typically will come in and crosshatch through zones here and again here and put signage up conveying, do not block the entry aisles so that if people are coming out this way, but more importantly, coming in this way, we don't get a backup log jam right here. So that's how we would do some interior site signage within the parking lot that created a no-stopping zone.
Thanks, and that sounds very dual. It sounds like it's just a matter of paint, correct? And signage? It sounds like it's just a matter of paint and some signage, and that's something that you're planning on doing then?
Both on the asphalt and then with a sign, a vertical sign.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Kears.
Mary, could you talk to me more about condition number two and what the impacts of including the driveway in the disturbance area will mean?
That came as a result of city engineering comment and that the approach on South Avenue didn't meet ADA the way the sidewalk slopes to the street. So since improvements will need to be made there to bring it up to ADA, we wanted it included in the disturbance area because they'll have to disturb it to make those improvements.
Thank you. Follow-up. I appreciate the reminder of that. So that, just kind of repeating what you said, will only impact the accessibility at, excuse me, traffic flow at that intersection isn't addressed with this condition. That's only addressing the ADA portions of the entrance.
Correct.
Thank you.
Further questions? Mr. Wilkins?
So I think I'm a little confused or I didn't hear right or something. You're talking about, I want a just right turn only, coming off South Avenue and going off reserve? You changed that? You said that they could make a left-hand turn onto the reserve?
I believe they can right now.
Well, I believe they shouldn't. Your driveway is too close to the stop sign, the light, to be able to make a left-hand turn, and I thought there was a divider there.
In reserve?
Yeah.
I believe it's a open either-turn, either-direction lane right now.
Well, I'd like to see a right-hand turn only. And the same with South Avenue, a right-hand turn, coming into your place?
Coming into the place.
And going out.
And going out. Right now, you can see, I don't know if you can see it, but there's left-hand turn bays for the, there's a left-hand turn bay for the east that allows people to turn into Rose Hours, and there's a left-hand turn bay headed west that allows people to turn into Shopko. And that's open in between there. So somebody could come out of Shopko and take a left-hand turn to head west on South, and somebody else could come out of Rose Hours and take a left-hand turn to head east.
Coming out of, coming out of Rose Hours and making a left-hand turn, I think it's a dangerous thing, well, at night, but there's traffic that goes.
Absolutely.
I've seen that traffic backed up on South Avenue almost to the mall.
Absolutely. There's definitely times of day where taking a left-hand turn out of either one of those driveways isn't going to work out for you.
I think any time of day. The other thing I want to talk about is your, you talk about pedestrian safety, so I'm at your pump, and I need to go into your store, and I'm a handicap person that don't walk too well. What keeps them cars from running over me?
That's a good question.
Because that's a pretty dangerous walk from where you're talking about to your store entrance.
I can address that question for you. If you're handicapped and you have an issue with the pump, we have call buttons by every station. Every pump station has a call button, so we can assist you if needed.
Hold up. Can you bring a water potty out to me if I need to go to the bathroom?
There's no restrooms addressed in this.
Further questions? Ms. Armstrong.
This is regarding the condition that you're asking to, for us to remove regarding the sight line or the roof gable-ing and the style of the roof. Can someone explain to me why the sight lines would be any different underneath the canopy, regardless of what the roof line looks like?
Change the screen to our proposed.
And I regret that the meeting structure is such that we can't really hash things out. But it's important to do everything in a public process. And, um, I also want to thank Mr. Wilkins for your service in the community and on city council. And, um, I'll stop there. Thanks.
Ms. Headall? And Ms. Jones?
I wanted to say thank you to John Wilkins. It's been an honor to serve with you on city council and you've always brought a very pragmatic point of view to council, which I appreciate. And Mertha Becerra, I wanted to welcome you to council. It's, it's, we're so lucky to have you on council and I think you have a lot of wisdom to bring. And then I just wanted to finish up by saying congratulations to the Sentinel Girls volleyball team that won state in Bozeman again. And I guess they were some barn burners of, uh, games against Billings Senior, but Missoula prevailed and, uh, the girls did a great job, so congratulations.
We have no committee reports this evening, nor any items of new business. Are there any additional items we referred? Any miscellaneous communications reports, petitions, or announcements? Seeing none of those, as always, I thank you for your service. We will be adjourned.